Welcome to City Hall. Welcome to council chambers and welcome to a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Friday, September 26, 2003. The city council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Meetings are open to the public and we do invite you to join us. For members of the public unable to attend council meetings, we can be viewed live on your cable station, Channel 35. We can also be viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage or heard via council phone. It is 10:20 a.m. and we have nine members present, one shy of a quorum. But this being Friday, as is customary, we do have a number of special recognitions and introductions to be made. Let's begin today's meeting by recognizing Councilmember Garcetti.
Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall. Welcome to council chambers and welcome to a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Friday, September 26, 2003. The city council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Meetings are open to the public and we do invite you to join us. For members of the public unable to attend council meetings, we can be viewed live on your cable station, Channel 35. We can also be viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage or heard via council phone. It is 10:20 a.m. and we have nine members present, one shy of a quorum. But this being Friday, as is customary, we do have a number of special recognitions and introductions to be made. Let's begin today's meeting by recognizing Councilmember Garcetti.
Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall. Welcome to council chambers and welcome to a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Friday, September 26, 2003. The city council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Meetings are open to the public and we do invite you to join us. For members of the public unable to attend council meetings, we can be viewed live on your cable station, Channel 35. We can also be viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage or heard via council phone. It is 10:20 a.m. and we have nine members present, one shy of a quorum. But this being Friday, as is customary, we do have a number of special recognitions and introductions to be made. Let's begin today's meeting by recognizing Councilmember Garcetti.
Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall. Welcome to council chambers and welcome to a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Friday, September 26, 2003. The city council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Meetings are open to the public and we do invite you to join us. For members of the public unable to attend council meetings, we can be viewed live on your cable station, Channel 35. We can also be viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage or heard via council phone. It is 10:20 a.m. and we have nine members present, one shy of a quorum. But this being Friday, as is customary, we do have a number of special recognitions and introductions to be made. Let's begin today's meeting by recognizing Councilmember Garcetti.
Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall. Welcome to council chambers and welcome to a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Friday, September 26, 2003. The city council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Meetings are open to the public and we do invite you to join us. For members of the public unable to attend council meetings, we can be viewed live on your cable station, Channel 35. We can also be viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage or heard via council phone. It is 10:20 a.m. and we have nine members present, one shy of a quorum. But this being Friday, as is customary, we do have a number of special recognitions and introductions to be made. Let's begin today's meeting by recognizing Councilmember Garcetti.
Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall. Welcome to council chambers and welcome to a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Friday, September 26, 2003. The city council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Meetings are open to the public and we do invite you to join us. For members of the public unable to attend council meetings, we can be viewed live on your cable station, Channel 35. We can also be viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage or heard via council phone. It is 10:20 a.m. and we have nine members present, one shy of a quorum. But this being Friday, as is customary, we do have a number of special recognitions and introductions to be made. Let's begin today's meeting by recognizing Councilmember Garcetti.
Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall. Welcome to council chambers and welcome to a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Friday, September 26, 2003. The city council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Meetings are open to the public and we do invite you to join us. For members of the public unable to attend council meetings, we can be viewed live on your cable station, Channel 35. We can also be viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage or heard via council phone. It is 10:20 a.m. and we have nine members present, one shy of a quorum. But this being Friday, as is customary, we do have a number of special recognitions and introductions to be made. Let's begin today's meeting by recognizing Councilmember Garcetti.
Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall. Welcome to council chambers and welcome to a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Friday, September 26, 2003. The city council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Meetings are open to the public and we do invite you to join us. For members of the public unable to attend council meetings, we can be viewed live on your cable station, Channel 35. We can also be viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage or heard via council phone. It is 10:20 a.m. and we have nine members present, one shy of a quorum. But this being Friday, as is customary, we do have a number of special recognitions and introductions to be made. Let's begin today's meeting by recognizing Councilmember Garcetti.
Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall. Welcome to council chambers and welcome to a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Friday, September 26, 2003. The city council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Meetings are open to the public and we do invite you to join us. For members of the public unable to attend council meetings, we can be viewed live on your cable station, Channel 35. We can also be viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage or heard via council phone. It is 10:20 a.m. and we have nine members present, one shy of a quorum. But this being Friday, as is customary, we do have a number of special recognitions and introductions to be made. Let's begin today's meeting by recognizing Councilmember Garcetti.
Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall. Welcome to council chambers and welcome to a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Friday, September 26, 2003. The city council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Meetings are open to the public and we do invite you to join us. For members of the public unable to attend council meetings, we can be viewed live on your cable station, Channel 35. We can also be viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage or heard via council phone. It is 10:20 a.m. and we have nine members present, one shy of a quorum. But this being Friday, as is customary, we do have a number of special recognitions and introductions to be made. Let's begin today's meeting by recognizing Councilmember Garcetti.
Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall. Welcome to council chambers and welcome to a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Friday, September 26, 2003. The city council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Meetings are open to the public and we do invite you to join us. For members of the public unable to attend council meetings, we can be viewed live on your cable station, Channel 35. We can also be viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage or heard via council phone. It is 10:20 a.m. and we have nine members present, one shy of a quorum. But this being Friday, as is customary, we do have a number of special recognitions and introductions to be made. Let's begin today's meeting by recognizing Councilmember Garcetti.
Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall. Welcome to council chambers and welcome to a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Friday, September 26, 2003. The city council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Meetings are open to the public and we do invite you to join us. For members of the public unable to attend council meetings, we can be viewed live on your cable station, Channel 35. We can also be viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage or heard via council phone. It is 10:20 a.m. and we have nine members present, one shy of a quorum. But this being Friday, as is customary, we do have a number of special recognitions and introductions to be made. Let's begin today's meeting by recognizing Councilmember Garcetti.
Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall. Welcome to council chambers and welcome to a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Friday, September 26, 2003. The city council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Meetings are open to the public and we do invite you to join us. For members of the public unable to attend council meetings, we can be viewed live on your cable station, Channel 35. We can also be viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage or heard via council phone. It is 10:20 a.m. and we have nine members present, one shy of a quorum. But this being Friday, as is customary, we do have a number of special recognitions and introductions to be made. Let's begin today's meeting by recognizing Councilmember Garcetti.
Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall. Welcome to council chambers and welcome to a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Friday, September 26, 2003. The city council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Meetings are open to the public and we do invite you to join us. For members of the public unable to attend council meetings, we can be viewed live on your cable station, Channel 35. We can also be viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage or heard via council phone. It is 10:20 a.m. and we have nine members present, one shy of a quorum. But this being Friday, as is customary, we do have a number of special recognitions and introductions to be made. Let's begin today's meeting by recognizing Councilmember Garcetti.
Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall. Welcome to council chambers and welcome to a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Friday, September 26, 2003. The city council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Meetings are open to the public and we do invite you to join us. For members of the public unable to attend council meetings, we can be viewed live on your cable station, Channel 35. We can also be viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage or heard via council phone. It is 10:20 a.m. and we have nine members present, one shy of a quorum. But this being Friday, as is customary, we do have a number of special recognitions and introductions to be made. Let's begin today's meeting by recognizing Councilmember Garcetti.
Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall. Welcome to council chambers and welcome to a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Friday, September 26, 2003. The city council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Meetings are open to the public and we do invite you to join us. For members of the public unable to attend council meetings, we can be viewed live on your cable station, Channel 35. We can also be viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage or heard via council phone. It is 10:20 a.m. and we have nine members present, one shy of a quorum. But this being Friday, as is customary, we do have a number of special recognitions and introductions to be made. Let's begin today's meeting by recognizing Councilmember Garcetti.
Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall. Welcome to council chambers and welcome to a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Friday, September 26, 2003. The city council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Meetings are open to the public and we do invite you to join us. For members of the public unable to attend council meetings, we can be viewed live on your cable station, Channel 35. We can also be viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage or heard via council phone. It is 10:20 a.m. and we have nine members present, one shy of a quorum. But this being Friday, as is customary, we do have a number of special recognitions and introductions to be made. Let's begin today's meeting by recognizing Councilmember Garcetti.
Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall. Welcome to council chambers and welcome to a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Friday, September 26, 2003. The city council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Meetings are open to the public and we do invite you to join us. For members of the public unable to attend council meetings, we can be viewed live on your cable station, Channel 35.
We can also be viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage or heard via council phone. It is 10:20 a.m. and we have nine members present, one shy of a quorum. But this being Friday, as is customary, we do have a number of special recognitions and introductions to be made. Let's begin today's meeting by recognizing Councilmember Garcetti.
Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall. Welcome to council chambers and welcome to a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Friday, September 26, 2003. The city council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Meetings are open to the public and we do invite you to join us. For members of the public unable to attend council meetings, we can be viewed live on your cable station, Channel 35. We can also be viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage or heard via council phone. It is 10:20 a.m. and we have nine members present, one shy of a quorum. But this being Friday, as is customary, we do have a number of special recognitions and introductions to be made. Let's begin today's meeting by recognizing Councilmember Garcetti.
Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall. Welcome to council chambers and welcome to a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Friday, September 26, 2003. The city council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Meetings are open to the public and we do invite you to join us. For members of the public unable to attend council meetings, we can be viewed live on your cable station, Channel 35. We can also be viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage or heard via council phone. It is 10:20 a.m. and we have nine members present, one shy of a quorum. I truly am humbled to be recognized for doing a job, something I've loved for years, and for my 35-year love affair with the Los Angeles Coliseum and the City of Los Angeles. Thank you, councilmen, not only for this recognition, but for being our guiding light as we pursue that NFL team, for our Coliseum, the city, and thousands of football fans. Thank you and the council for this honor and for all the wonderful cooperation you give us when we call and need it. It's a great marriage. Thank you.
Mr. Labange.
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilmember Parks and Margaret Farnum, thank you, Councilmember Parks, for honoring truly one of the great city employees of all time. You know, the Today's Paper had a story that, about the Jack Murphy Stadium, the San Diego Stadium, Qualcomm, and how it's going out of business from a baseball stadium, and they had many comments from the people who spoke about that stadium in San Diego. You know, it was a great place. Oh, the Chargers sometime won, the parties were good sometimes, but the stadium never had the love. The beauty of the Los Angeles Memorial Coliseum, of the people who built it and the people like you who've carried on its tradition, it was a grand stadium. It was built with great thought by great architects who built that para-style that sits up there that is a monument to athletics. And further, the field, the athletic field, no field in the world has had more great athletes than the Los Angeles Memorial Coliseum. And then the events from the Pope, from John Kennedy's acceptance of the inauguration in 1960, to the Rolling Stones, to Bruce Springsteen, to everything that you've done there. It's truly a great place. But the football field, which I know Councilman Parks is passionate about bringing back the National Football League, this is where they should play if it's a field that they want to play on, if they want to be great athletes. If they want to build a shopping mall for a stadium, they could go someplace else. But if they want to build a place to watch great athletic events that has great history, it's the Los Angeles Memorial Coliseum. And you, Margaret Farnum, more than anyone else, has carried the torch higher than ever in helping that stadium, helping that facility, helping Exposition Park breathe the great, great place that it is. I just want to thank you. I also do this from time to time, but I grab back and thank from the great late John Ferraro, who loved you dearly, for all the work that you've done for the University of Southern California, for anyone who's had an event at the Los Angeles Memorial Coliseum. There's many motion pictures that I love, and one of the greatest ones is Jim Thorpe, All-American by Burt Lancaster. And it talks about young Jim Thorpe as a Carlisle Indian and finally playing baseball, and then his problem that he had when he was in the Olympics because they said he was professional. But there's a great scene in that movie of the 1932 games where Thorpe, who was a 1912 Olympic winner in Stockholm, I believe, was sitting up in the high levels of like Row 63 and Tunnel 9 above, and there was a pan of the stadium, and he was looking at that and getting inspired again. And he left those Olympic Games, and he was a truck driver. And then he was a truck driver, and he was driving over here on what would have been probably Santa Fe Avenue, and he ran over a bunch of kids playing in a rail yard, their football. And the kids were all disappointed because they lost the football. The very next day, that same truck driver, which was Burt Lancaster playing Jim Thorpe, came back with a brand-new football, kicked it a mile high, and all the kids loved him. The connection to the Coliseum, the connection to that great venue, and all the '32 Olympic Games and the '84 games, and hopefully, again, we'll have the Olympics come to that great venue, it's so great. But you have been part of that, Margaret, and you truly are a great employer of the City of Los Angeles and the County of Los Angeles and the State of California. I just wanted to stand and salute you and the place that you work, and salute absolutely everyone who had anything to do with it because it's such a part of our history and it's such an important building. And I want to close by thanking Councilmember Parks for being so strong on that facility because there is no better athletic field in the world than the Los Angeles Memorial Coliseum. Thank you, Margaret Farnum.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Mr. Smith.
I want to add my words to what Mr. Labange said about the work you've done at the Coliseum over my 24 years with Hal Bernson. I know we didn't ask you for a lot, but whatever we ask you for, you perform. But more importantly, I think of you more like the torch that burns above the Coliseum. It's lit to remind people of the greatness of that institution, and you in a way of the torch of the Coliseum as well, because you've kept the torch alive by your community commitment, by the work you've done to keep the Coliseum on the forefront of people's minds, and the historical value that that institution brings to this city can never be destroyed, and you're a great part of what made that torch burn, not just physically but mentally in the minds of the Los Angeles citizens. So to you, for the work you've done in that community, but also for the thousands and millions of citizens that don't know you, but that you've kept that torch alive in their mind for decades to come, and for the work you've done in the past, thank you for your commitment. Thank you so much.
May I just say, this was all possible over my years here because of the patience and understanding of my late husband and my son, Bill Farnum.
Thank you very much. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Cardenas, Garcetti, Gruel, Han, Labange, Ladlo, Miskowski, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Smith, Villarosa, White, Zain, Padilla, 11 members present and a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. The council is officially in session. First order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Cardenas moves. Ms. Perry seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Smith moves, and Mr. Labange seconds.
On the regular agenda, items 1 through 3 are items noticed for public hearing. Council should deny the protests on items 2 and 3 and confirm the assessments.
Items 1 through 3 now before us, and I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council on these items, shall therefore deem the public hearings open and closed. Members wishing to call any specials, items 1, 2, or 3, seeing none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Those are ordinances, and do carry over for a second reading. Next item, please.
Items 4 through 17 and 19 through 22 are various commission appointments and reappointments. Do you wish to take these up at this time?
Let's hold commission appointments on the desk. Colleagues will go through the agenda, call items special, dispense with consent items, and take the commission nominees and reappointees as our first deliberation. Mr. Clerk.
Items 18 and 23 through 34 are items for which public hearings have been held. On item 34, there are two reports on one file. Council may adopt both reports.
Okay, colleagues, public hearings have been held on these items. A motion from the floor would be required to reopen the public hearings. Members wishing to call any specials, Ms. Gruel.
Thank you. Mr. President, item number 25, please.
25, call special by Ms. Gruel. Any other specials? Seeing none. Mr. Clerk, on the balance of the items, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Items 35 through 59 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, without objection, these items are before us today, and I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council on items 35 through 59, satisfying the public hearings. Are there requests for specials, members? Any specials? Seeing none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll on items 35 through 59. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Those are approved. Item 36 is an ordinance and does carry over for a second reading. Next item, please.
Back to the items called special. Item 4 is the reappointment of Mr. Christopher Hammond to the Board of Recreation and Park Commissioners.
Is Mr. Hammond here today? Mr. Labange.
Hammond could be here, but he's been an excellent commissioner for the park commissioner, for the park commission of recreation parks. He lives in my district, in fact, very close to Griffin Park, and very involved, so I would ask that we support it. A business appointment called him away.
Okay. Colleagues, item number 4 is currently before us. Mr. Hammond is unable to join us today. We do have a committee report recommending approval. Is there any further discussion? If not, Mr. Labange moves approval. Please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That is approved. Fourth with, please. Next item.
Item 5 is the reappointment of Ms. Jennifer Perry to the Commission for Children, Youth, and Families.
Is Ms. Perry with us today? She can come forward at this time. Colleagues, and again, we have a committee report recommending approval of item number 5. Are there members wishing to be heard on Ms. Perry's appointment or reappointment? Ms. Gruel.
Thank you. Sorry. Good morning, Ms. Perry. How are you?
Good morning, Councilwoman.
I just wanted to say actually some good words about Jennifer Perry and all the activities that she's done with Children's Action Network and being a commissioner, and we're very lucky to have her on this particular commission. And she is somebody that adds a breadth of experience to this commission, and it's something that's dear to my heart and I know to hers. She not only talks the talk but walks the walk on this one and has been out there on children's issues for all of her career. So I'm just pleased that you're interested in being reappointed and serving, and I can take a funny dig at Alan Arkataf that you're even willing to serve with Alan. He's not here to hear that, but...
I'm sure he'll respond somehow, some way.
But anyways, we're just pleased at your willingness to serve, and myself, and I know Councilmember Padilla and many others are interested in this commission and its recommendations as we move forward to making this a much more children-friendly and child-friendly city, and looking at, I know, the budget, looking at all the departments and how much they're spending on children to highlight what it is we're doing and maybe what we're not doing that we need to focus on in Los Angeles. So we're looking forward to your leadership on that and to come back to us with some recommendations. So congratulations, and thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gruel. Other members wishing to be heard? Seeing none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That is approved. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And thank you for your service to the city. Next item, please.
Item 6 is the reappointment of Mr. Daniel L. Germain to the Disabled Access Appeals Commission.
Mr. Germain, welcome.
Thank you.
Colleagues, item number 6 now before us, and once again, we do have a committee report recommending approval. Are there members wishing to be heard on Mr. Germain's reappointment? Any discussion? Seeing none. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Thank you for being with us.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
Item 7 is the reappointment of Ms. Lisa C. to the El Pueblo Historical Monument Authority.
Ms. C., Ms. Lisa C., if you're with us, please come forward at this time. Apparently, she's not able to be with us this morning, but we do have a committee report recommending approval. Are there members wishing to be heard? Mr. Villarosa.
Yes, I speak to this, in support of this appointment, Mr. President, members. Ms. C. writes books about the Chinese-American community, particularly because her family was one of the first Chinese-American families to settle at El Pueblo, and we've all mentioned, Mr. Garcetti and others have mentioned over the time, the ethnic makeup of the original pobladores, and the fact that El Pueblo was the place where we segregated in this city, Latinos, Chinese-Americans, the French, and the Italian in this quarter here. Having someone who has deep roots there, cares passionately about the area, I think would be great for the commission, I would support it.
Thank you very much. Other members wishing to be heard on this item? Seeing none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That is approved. All commission confirmations shall be sent forth with. Next item, please.
Item 8 is the appointment of Ms. Jerry Witt to the Board of Library Commissioners.
Ms. Witt? Is Ms. Witt with us today? I understand she might not be here today, but we do have a committee report recommending approval. Are there members wishing to be heard on item number 8? Seeing none. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That is approved. Fourth with as well. Next item. Fourth with on 28.
Item 9 is the reappointment of Ms. Holly Wyman to the Cultural Heritage Commission.
Is Ms. Wyman with us? She might not be here today, but we do have a committee report recommending approval. Members wishing to be heard on the reappointment of Ms. Wyman to the Cultural Heritage Commission? Seeing none. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That is approved. Fourth with, please. Next item.
Item 10 is the reappointment of Ms. Alice Harris to the Affordable Housing Commission.
Okay, and if Ms. Harris is here, she'll come forward, and if not, we'll hear from Mr. Garcetti first.
Thank you, Mr. President. There's a number of commissioners in a row. Let me just talk about Ms. Harris and refer to the rest, and I won't get up and speak about them. Ms. Harris came to committee. I think we all know Alice, sweet Alice Harris is a great appointment, somebody who has, single-handedly by force of will and with a lot of partners, brought incredible network of social services and community services to the Watts community, and we all were unanimous in our support of her, as we were in support of the reappointment of Mr. Rubin to the Housing Authority, Ms. Jackson to the Housing Authority, which is a new, it's a new appointment, the reappointment of Mr. O'Sullivan to the Homeless Services Authority, Mr. Salas, Ms. Del Angel to the Housing Authority, and also to KJ Kim to the Industrial Development Authority. Really, a stellar team. I see Mr. Rubin here, Mr. Kim, others, but just wanted to give Ms. Jackson as well our strong support from the committee, and we were very impressed with the conversations we had there, and we look forward to their service and continued service in both the housing and economic development areas of the city. So thank you all for putting yourselves forward, and I wanted to let everybody know that.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Other members wishing to be heard? Seeing none. On item number 10, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That is approved. Fourth with, please. Next item.
Items 11, 12, 14, and 15 are the appointment and reappointments of Mr. David Rubin, Ms. Levy Jackson, Mr. Manuel Salas, and Ms. Maria Del Angel to the Housing Authority of the City of Los Angeles.
Okay, if the, this group of commission nominees can come forward, please. Sergeants, if you can add a chair to the table in the middle. And colleagues, once again, we do have a committee report recommending approval of the appointments and reappointments of the commission nominees before us. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That is approved. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you all for your service to the city. Fourth with on items 11, 12, 14, and 15. Next item, please.
Item 13 is the reappointment of Mr. Dennis O'Sullivan to the Los Angeles Homeless Services Authority.
Mr. O'Sullivan, I don't believe can join us this morning, but we do have a committee report recommending approval. He was in the housing committee Wednesday morning. Is there any discussion on Mr. O'Sullivan's reappointment? Seeing no members wishing to be heard, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That is approved. Fourth with, please. Next item.
Items 16 and 17 are the appointments of Mr. Kun Jong Kim and Ms. Irma Hopkins to the Industrial Development Authority.
Okay. If Mr. Kim and Ms. Hopkins can come forward? Members wishing to be heard, beginning with Mr. Garcetti.
Mr. Kim, I think we already had at the table, and so I asked that we move that forward. Ms. Hopkins, we haven't seen in committee or here, so I'd ask that to be continued so we can make sure that we bring her in for that appointment. And let's just hold it here so we can invite her for another day in council. Why don't we continue that till next Tuesday?
Okay. Colleagues, any objection to continuing item number 17? Seeing none. Item 17 is continued to Tuesday, September 30th of this year. On Mr. Kim's appointment, Mr. Clerk...
Mr. President, I understand there is a time limit on item 17 of today.
Today's the final day to act, Mr. Garcetti. Today's the final day to act on... Okay, we'll hold it on the desk. On Mr. Kim's appointment, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item 19 is the reappointment of Ms. Joanne Vaillée to the Harbor Area Planning Commission.
And Ms. Vaillée's coming forward. Thank you for being here this morning. Colleagues, we do have a committee report recommending approval of Ms. Vaillée's reappointment to the Area Planning Commission. Are there members wishing to be heard on this item? Seeing none. I'm sure Ms. Han is enthusiastic about your service. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service. Next item, please.
Items 20 and 22 are the reappointments of Mr. Mitchell Mezner and Mr. Richard Brown to the City Planning Commission.
Mr. Mezner, Mr. Brown, thank you for being here. Colleagues, we have a committee report recommending approval of the two gentlemen in front of us. Members wishing to be heard, beginning with Mr. Smith.
Thank you. Member of the council, I just want to rise in support of Mr. Mezner, and I don't know Mr. Brown, so I'm going to assume that if he's good with Mr. Mezner, we have a good choice here. I've had the opportunity to sit down with Mitch on a number of occasions to talk about I've had the opportunity to sit down with Mitch on a number of occasions to talk about the planning process in the city. I know he has a real hands-on feel for it and a real concern, wants to make it a better process, and as a Commissioner, I know he's doing a great job to make that happen in a department that I feel has a lot of problems. And I appreciate your work over on the Commission. You've been a good Commissioner. I know you have a real heart to make this work, so thank you, and I wholeheartedly support his reappointment, and Mr. Brown too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Gruel.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to stand in support of Mr. Brown and Mr. Menzner. I've had, unfortunately, I've not had as much interaction with you, Mr. Brown, but I've heard good things, and I'm glad that you're here today, and have had the pleasure of working a little bit with Mitch in not just items that are coming before the Commission, but also broader picture, big-picture items, which is how we can make the planning process something that is reasonable, that meets the needs of the community, but at the same time ensures that we can have a city that is growing, and that we have a place in which we're able to balance those two needs. And we're looking forward to, and I know when I served on Plum with Commissioner, excuse me, Councilmember Reyes, and for a while, Mr. Smith, the importance of that, and that we hear so often from our business community that we want to, they have no problem in responding to the rules. They don't like the rules to change in the middle, they would like to have the rules known and have a process that makes sense. And so, I'm looking forward to continued, I think, coordination with you all, because you spend hours at those meetings, I know. I have been to a few, listening to the community, patiently listening to the developers as well, and to come up with sometimes a solution that not everyone is happy with, but I always feel if you've angered both sides, you've probably done the right thing. So, I just want to say thank you, and we are going to look to you all, again, as a Commission, to come back to us with ideas on how we can make this process manageable that demonstrates we're a business-friendly city, and we also care about not making our neighborhoods also a place that is different than what they had anticipated when they bought their home or bought their other type of property. So, I just want to say thank you and continue to challenge you on issues that are important for us in looking at managed and balanced growth in Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Zikowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise too in support of both of these appointments, and like Ms. Gruel, I've known Mr. Menzner for a bit longer. It's interesting, the Planning Commission members is probably before charter reform and before neighborhood councils, the City Commission, which comes regularly into direct contact with more people. I think if we just did a calculation of how many citizens go to Commission meetings, Planning Commission over the decades would be number one, just because the number of people who come day in, day out, whether it was the small cases that now go to the Area Planning Commission, smaller neighborhood-related cases, or the larger ones, people are concerned about the decisions you make. Wendy talked about the kind of decisions in terms of business-friendly, quality of life, and that balance that is on this Commission. But, members, the interesting thing is, we've all talked a little bit recently around here about the LAX Master Plan. The final decision-makers before it comes to us on the LAX Master Plan will be this Commission. And already, I know they are looking at it, raising those concerns, just because you take that responsibility seriously. So, I too commend you, and commend you as we have commended all the Commission appointments that are coming up today. But I know the particular hard work and the particular attention that your Commission, because of the way, of the types of cases you deal with, has that highest level of a city face interacting on a regular Thursday meeting with the public. So, thank you for that. Thank you for being a very positive influence and a positive, good face in terms of hearing those sometimes conflicts and sometimes contentious issues, but helping to sort it out. So, thank you for that.
Thank you.
Mr. Labange.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you for your reappointment, what you do. What can we do to help you? Because you're trying to balance it out. Give us some of your thoughts.
Well, I think, I've been particularly interested in working with the Planning Department to improve its performance, and what I have found is that the Planning Department, if we're able to articulate what the goals are and what the expectations are, they will do a fine job of trying to meet those. And in certain areas, including the Office of Zoning Administration subdivision process, we've seen a tremendous amount of progress in terms of their becoming more efficient, their ability to handle the caseload. And I think it's important, in a city as big as this, to be able to articulate what the expectations are, and particularly for the council and individual council offices, to focus on what those issues are. So, I would welcome as much contact and collaboration with the City Council and with individual council offices as to what the Planning Department can be doing a better job of, and particularly in individual districts with individual neighborhoods and communities. So, I'd like to see whether we can help facilitate the way in which the Planning Department can work more closely with council offices, but also with other departments as well, to be a part of revitalizing and improving neighborhoods and communities.
And I might add that by continuing to allow your constituents...
Mr. President, I, if I ask the sergeants if they would just try to keep a little bit down, because I want everybody here, because planning is so important.
From my perspective, having the council people continue to alert their constituents when the meetings are and allow their voices to be heard, because we are very interested in people coming in front of the Commission and listening to what they have to say.
From a neighborhood standpoint, I work directly with, as we all do, with neighborhoods, but I do listen to the neighborhood that is as close to the issue. Our emerging neighborhood council have not totally developed a role necessarily in planning, and philosophically, I believe you have to go to the neighborhood. It may be the, let's just say if there's a case on Vermont Avenue and Findlay, it's in the Los Feliz Improvement area, Los Feliz Improvement Association's area, that's what I'm going to focus on as a council member. I will hear from the Greater Griffith Park Neighborhood Council, but I'm going to focus on that local group. How do you see us evolving in that area with neighborhood, local neighborhood? Because there was a case that I think we were able to resolve, and I always like it when Ed's hearing me on this here. The issue was, they were working with a neighborhood block, but they weren't working with the whole neighborhood. And then, once we got the whole neighborhood together and understand what the challenges were, we were able to reach some agreement and move forward. What's going on in that area?
Well, I guess I would, just by way of comment, underscore the importance of clear direction from the council office to bring everybody together, and bring everybody together with the goal of trying to work out an agreement, if that's possible. And I think we've seen in some cases in your district where you've taken both the neighborhood group and the developer and created a clear expectation that they're there to work together and see what they can resolve has actually helped drive a useful settlement. And I think there was a recent project on Wilshire Boulevard where we saw that take place, because the council office knew personally invested some time to articulate to the homeowners' association and the developer that they needed to work together and find a solution, and with that kind of direction, they will. And I think we need more of that, candidly, from the council.
Lastly, if I just could ask, the regional, the regional planning commissions, how are they working with the big planning commission? How is that?
Well, basically, very well. I mean, they do, the practical point is, they do lighten our load, and certainly closer to the community, since they come from the community. But, you know, the most pleasant decisions we can make are agreeing to an agreement, confirming an agreement, because then all the parties have basically settled any problems that they may have. The most difficult thing, obviously, is to make a decision, which we do not back away from, but we'd rather have the parties work together, the developer, the neighbors, et cetera. And I think the Area Planning Commission has been extremely helpful in that respect.
Great. Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Commissioners, and look forward to working with you in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. First, I wanted to rise and thank the two gentlemen here for their work, Mr. Menzner in particular, your leadership in the Commission, in working with me and trying to find that space, that ground in which we can allow for neighborhood councils, homeowner associations, neighborhood groups, as well as businesses, and those who are involved in the real estate industry, to have a better sense of confidence, a greater sense of confidence in building up systems that are predictable, are not duplicating. And to that, and I want to just thank you, Mr. Brown as well, for your effort. I still feel we have a long way to go. I think there's a culture here we need to change in the Planning Department that talks about the opportunities that we have in being proactive. I think they're doing the best they can with the personnel they have in terms of number of people, given the demand and volume of work that's there. So, for that, I applaud them for that hard work. And with budget constraints, we need to find ways to build up resources so they can move those permits, move those applications, move those cases. But let me, I just want to ask you a question. In terms of building up environments where people can invest, what else could we do in regards to demonstrating to the mainstream, demonstrating to those who make those decisions where funds should go? What else can we do to show the opportunities we have in these communities? They might be profiled as being high poverty, but we tend to ignore how many dollars actually there are, given the density in these areas. Can we talk, can you just share some thoughts on that? I know I'm putting you on the spot.
No, it's a wonderful question. I think it is one of the great challenges that the city has. I come back to a feeling that for that type of revitalization, we need to have all of the departments that are involved in that working in sync, and that would include the CRA, Building and Safety, Community Development, the Planning Department plays a role in that. There are instances where outside agencies, like the LA Unified School District, and we need to have all of those departments and agencies acting in sync with a particular strategy. And I think that we're starting to see some progress. The mayor's office is showing some leadership in trying to come, bring those departments together. But the council office in particular could be very helpful in bringing all those departments together, get them working together on a single strategy that's all going in the same direction, and hopefully creating an environment where there's certainty about, for private investment and also public investment in each of these neighborhoods. And I think if we could bring all that together, we'd create an environment where private capital and public capital together can really make a big difference.
Thank you. Mr. Brown and Mr. Menzner, do you, at this point, think we have a, do we have an economic development strategy within the context of planning, working with other departments? Do you see one evolving? If it is, if you do see one, can you share some thoughts on that?
Well, I think, I'm a glass-half-full kind of person, so I'm an optimist by nature, and I do see that there are instances, I think pilot projects in the first council district where the CRA and the Planning Department and some others are working together with a particular revitalization strategy in mind. But we need to have those kinds of collaborative efforts working in every council district.
Great.
And my hope is that if we can show progress and success in one area, we can replicate that.
I'm a pessimist, but in this case, I'm very optimistic that there is a commonality of purpose. The expediting of filings, I think, is going to be helpful. We have to be responsive. We have to develop a common philosophy, common, well, complementary expertise, and then expedite it. I mean, nobody wants to wait forever to get a project done, and I think there's improvement in that area.
And just in closing, because I know my time is up, I want to thank Councilmember Labange, because we will be having the Plum Committee in this district this next month. But I wanted to invite my colleagues, those that are listening, that it would be a great opportunity for my colleagues to share with their constituents what their economic development strategy is, what's important to them in their district, where does the housing, where do they see it fitting, where do they see the commercial development coming in? And it would be a great session if we can allow our investors, our Commissioners, the mayor, to know what your priorities are in your district. Land use is one of the driving forces that talks about our quality of life. If we do not understand what's important in your district, we cannot share that, and therefore, we cannot bring in investment into your area. That's what I hear coming from the Commissioners. It'd be great if we had that perspective, that vision, should be your vision, along with the constituents. Let us know. Let's use Plum as that vehicle. I look forward to meeting in your district. I truly appreciate that cooperation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Other members wishing to be heard on this item? Seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Mr. Menzner, Mr. Brown, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Mr. President, because it's your time, Mr. Brown, what about the Angels? What's their problem this year?
No, thank you. Show you how successful I was, I left before they won the championship.
Next item, please.
Item 21 is the reappointment of Ms. Barbara Boudreau to the Board of Building and Safety Commissioners.
Ms. Boudreau. As she comes forward, colleagues, once again, we do have a committee report recommending approval. Are there members wishing to be heard on Ms. Boudreau's reappointment? Seeing Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. Shear. I would just like to rise in support of Mrs. Barbara Boudreau's continued service to the City of Los Angeles. I think she did outstanding job on the LA Unified School District, almost an inhuman task of trying to educate almost a million children in our city, at the same time, without adequate resources, buildings, and certainly trying to revamp the issues it dealt with teachers, and still came forth as a star out of the, my community in the 10th District and the 8th District. And so, we're just pleased to see that you are going to continue, that you're going to be a part of the city family as a Commissioner. We look forward to working with you, and just want to say, keep up the good work, and we're looking forward to great things from you in the future.
Thank you, Councilman Parks.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Anyone else wishing to speak? If not, we have Ms. Boudreau's confirmation before us. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is also confirmed. Congratulations and thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. I was on the side.
Next item.
Item 25 was called special by Councilmember Gruel.
Ms. Gruel, Ms. Gruel, item 25 is now called special.
Thank you, Madam President. You all were moving so quickly there. I saw 17 and thought that was going to go first. Colleagues, today, we are, have before us an item, one of our first items out of the Audit and Government Efficiency Committee from last week. And as many of you know, City Hall has a 311 hotline since November of last year, in 2002. We had somewhat of a soft opening. We have the fact that some people know the 311 exists and others do not. We are beginning a process of going to market that. We are working closely with the mayor's office, who was planning a big marketing pitch to share with people, that instead of calling 911, you can call 311, so that you don't overburden our police service representatives who answer those phones with things that have no relationship to an emergency. But what you may not have realized in this last year, and that despite the establishment of the 311, one call to City Hall hotline, we continue to have 144 1-800 or toll-free numbers still in operation. And we've been working with the mayor's office on this issue as well, but these 1-800 numbers cost the city more than a half a million dollars a year to operate. A half a million dollars. And in a time, but this is, for me, and I hope you all agree, that this is an extremely ineffective way in which to do business. It's also very confusing to our constituents. Several city departments operate their own call centers, apart from the 311 call center. The motion before you today asks the CAO to identify where we can eliminate the 1-800 toll-free numbers and where we can consolidate some of these call centers. At a time when the city stands to lose $47 million in state funds, I believe strongly that we must reexamine city government and reexamine the way in which we do business. Now, the more than ever, we must address the inefficiencies, we must streamline the way a city does business, and we must protect the public's money, and ultimately deliver more and better services to our constituents and to the people of Los Angeles. I have used, and I know Tom Labange has used, the 311 center. It works very effectively. I checked the next day to make sure that they've picked up that car, picked up that couch that I saw in the neighborhood, or the graffiti, and I have been very impressed. I think as we continue to educate people about the 311 system, we will need to make sure our departments are ready, willing, and able to respond immediately to those requests. But we do not need 144 toll-free numbers when we have a new 311 system. So, I'd ask for your support today so that we can show the city residents that in fact... So I'd ask for your support today so that we can show the city residents that, in fact, we are trying to streamline, be more cost-effective, and that we will have, hopefully, a half a million dollars that we will be able to put back into police services or to public services in Los Angeles. So I ask for an aye vote today. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Gruehl. Let me recognize Mr. Cardenas.
I just want to thank my colleague Wendy Gruehl for this excellent motion. One thing that I may have missed, what is the potential savings roughly if we were to get this in order and increase our efficiencies with these 800 numbers?
It would be a little over $500,000.
Wow.
Yeah, it's a lot, a lot of money. And we're hoping there's going to be some other ways in which we can look at those inefficiencies. We want people to obviously know they can, they can call on that pothole or whatever, but the 3-1-1 system, and I think you may find as well some good ideas on how we publicize to people that 3-1-1 number.
And this, this would be a general fund savings?
It would be a general fund savings.
Yes. Thank you. Once again, I just want to say this is an excellent, excellent motion. And one of the things that we have to be reminded, and mainly talking to the public here, is that this general fund actually does very important things like feeds seniors. It does very important things like making sure we have after-school programs to make our streets safer for our children and everyone else. So it's a wonderful, wonderful opportunity, and I look forward to all of us just scouring all of the things that we do here to make sure that we tighten our belt and actually do find savings, whether it's $5,000 or $500,000. Thank you.
Mr. Labange.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to thank Wendy for this action here, which is so important to look to consolidate, because we don't realize we are making and taking steps forward to improve the operation of city government. And then all of a sudden, we look around, maybe a technology that we needed 10 years ago, 15 years ago, the 800 numbers, is no longer needed today. So this savings will go a long way in helping us improve efficiencies. And I just do want to say, one call does it all, the City Hall. I think that's what Mayor Hahn says, 3-1-1. And that's what we should all use, and they're very good, very good attendance. How many here have called 3-1-1? I just want an instant poll out there. You like that there? Good, it works. We got our great friends, Prudy and from the Schultz, Don Schultz from the Van Nuys area here. One call to City Hall, 3-1-1, and then transfer this 800 series out as respected. I really also want to say too, Wendy, they have been able to improve greatly, where they are able to carry people from the 3-1-1 call directly into the department even further. So this technology has helped. Certainly, the 800 numbers were a great help in years past, but now it's really been improved. I thank you, and 3-1-1 call does it all. Thank you.
Thank you. There is no one else wishing to speak. I thank Councilmember Gruehl for calling this special to have that discussion and get that beginning of the communication out there to our public. We can now open the roll on the recommendation, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That matter is approved. Next item.
Still on the desk, Madam President, is item 17.
Item 17, is there anyone wishing to speak? Item 17 is...
Councilmember Garcetti had requested that be held on the desk.
Mr. Garcetti, item 17 is still on the desk. It's our last, I believe, remaining item to act on.
Thank you very much, Madam President. I would ask today, we're going to have this nominee come forward again from the mayor's office. I've spoken with them, but because the nominee wasn't able to come to committee or to council, I would ask today that we reject, which is not rejecting her. We're probably, from all we've heard, she's a great nominee. We just want the chance to talk to her. But procedurally, the only way to get the mayor's office to have the power to have 45 more days, starting tomorrow, to reappoint her, is to reject today. So I'd move that we do that. We very much look forward to speaking with Ms. Hopkins, hear just great things about her, but want to have the chance for us to do our duty with the nominee. So I would move that today.
All right. We've heard Mr. Garcetti's motion on item 17, which is to reject the nomination so that it can be started again with a new clock. No one else wishing to speak? Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Now would be time for comments from the public on items not on today's council agenda.
All right. We do have a speaker card in public comment. Let me call in Mr. Don Garza.
My name's Don Garza, and I'm from Central City East.
Could we turn the microphone up?
Well, they know I got a loud mouth, so they figured, you know. I'm from Central City East, and I'm just here from Skid Row. Quiero dar agradecimiento. I want to give my appreciation to la gran concejal, la Jan Perry, el gran concejal del 14 distrito, Antonio Villarreal. I want to give him great applause and appreciation for what they've done by sending out and making that motion to do a study, a feasibility study on a Skid Row Dash. La gente en vez de cuando no se acuerda de nosotros, los más pobres, los más enfermos, los más que no tenemos nada. A lot of times, people forget about us, those of us that are sick, those of us that basically have nothing. But these two people have shown that they're willing to do something for us that, that is very important to us, especially me. And I've talked to very other, many other people in the community. So I would just like to give my appreciation for the fact that they're throwing out this feasibility study out there for our Skid Row Dash. And I'm hoping that some other things happen as well, but gracias, Jan Perry.
Thank you, Mr. Garza. There are no other public speaker cards, so I will close the public hearing. What remains on the desk?
Council has motions for posting her referral.
They are posted and referred.
There are excuses on the desk. Councilmember Garcetti requests to be excused Tuesday, October 7th, to leave at noon for city business, meets policy.
Mr. Garcetti is excused.
Councilmember Cardenas requests to be excused Wednesday, October 1st, for city business, meets policy.
That's, excuse is approved.
Councilmember Parks requests to be excused Friday, October 10th, for city business, meets policy.
Mr. Parks is excused on the 10th.
And Councilmembers Ryan requests to be excused Tuesday, October 28th, for personal business, meets policy.
That excuse is approved as well.
The desk is clear, Madam President.
All right. Are there any announcement members? It is time for announcements. I don't see any announcements. Are there, Mr. Labange has an announcement.
Thank you. I just wanted to say on this weekend here, there's a lot of activities throughout, and I asked people to visit the Los Angeles Zoo. It's a wonderful, wonderful place to visit, and I want to encourage people to come out, bring their families out. It's a good time of year because it's cooled off. It's cooled off, and it's not as warm as it was over the summer months, so you could really enjoy it. The animals and the exhibits are great to see, and I want to thank our zoo staff for the great job that they're doing. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Any other announcements? Any adjourning motions? There are adjourning motions, so would everyone please rise for our adjourning tributes? Mr. Parks, did you have an adjourning tribute?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to request that we adjourn in honor of Mr. James Hamilton Giles. He is the father of one of our NASCAR, local NASCAR drivers, Felix Giles. After a long battle with several illnesses, James died Tuesday, September the 23rd. He will be missed by many funeral services held Monday, September 29th, at Bethany Christian Church in Cleveland, Ohio.
Any other tributes? Mr. Labange.
Yeah, members, I would think we should adjourn in memory of Mark Feynman, who was a 17-year veteran of the Los Angeles Times, over a 29-year history as a journalist. He was covering for the Los Angeles Times the situation in Baghdad. He was at a checkpoint. He collapsed and was rushed to a medical hospital. Unfortunately, he died. He was 51 years old. From the news accounts and news stories, he absolutely really loved his job as a reporter, where he would go to all places in the world, whether it's in the Philippines, in Asia, throughout the Mideast, and cover those stories for the Times. And I believe he had several hundred first-page frontline stories with his name attached to covering the information on the world's edge of a conflict somewhere. Mark Feynman, 51 years old, Los Angeles Times journalist, tragically passed of a heart attack. Yes, we adjourned his memory.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Other tributes? Now, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Council is adjourned.